Good evening and welcome, everybody, to the City of Isani City Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 4th. Is there any citizen input? No citizen input at this time. If I ask if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all council members are present. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Collison and a second from Councilman Lundin to adopt the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Approval of city council minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Announcements, city office is closed Monday, February 17th, in observation of President's Day. A committee of a whole meeting is Tuesday, February 18th, at 5:00 PM. City council meeting is also Tuesday, February 18th, at 7:00 PM, with a planning commission meeting immediately following that on Tuesday, February 18th, as well. Any council committee reports? Alright. We'll move into the meat of this here, then. Moving on to the business items. Number J1, ordinance amending city code, Chapter 76, possession, sale, and consumption of alcoholic beverages. Don, I believe you have this, sir?
Mayor Johnson, City Council, staff has finished a complete review and update of city code, Chapter 76, alcoholic beverages. Included in the update is new language for licensing of culinary class limited licenses, micro-distilleries, micro-distillery cocktail rooms, the municipal liquor store, as well as other reordered and updated language. The city attorney has reviewed the updated city code, and this has been reviewed by the Committee of the Whole, recommended for your consideration.
Any discussions, comments, or questions by the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Collison and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. J2, ordinance, repealing and replacing ordinance number 485, adopted on May 5th, 2010, entitled peddlers, solicitors, and transit merchants. Don, you also have that one, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Johnson, and City Council. Again, staff has done a complete review of city code, Chapter 245, peddlers, solicitors, transit merchants, adding mobile food units. The major, major changes are as follows, extension of solicitor and peddler licenses to all zoning districts. Previously, they had been restricted to residential districts, and also fundraising activities with donation or payment in exchange for a product would be included in solicitor licenses. That is per recommendation of the city attorney. And then, the addition of mobile food units in commercial areas on private property with applicable regulations similar to area cities, as had been discussed at Committee of the Whole. Mobile food units would be allowed to operate in residential or park zoning districts as part of a special event permit. City Attorney has reviewed all the code amendments, and this has been to the Committee of the Whole with recommendation for your consideration.
I have just one question on that one. Will this include, like, Cambridge-Izani wrestling and football? Stuff like, items like that?
As far as if they go around and, and ask for donations and that?
Selling, like, the coupon cards and things like that?
Coupon cards or candy or anything, they would, should come and get a solicitor's permit for the entire organization before they would proceed with that activity. Again, that's per the, per the city attorney.
Okay. I just, I guess I would recommend emailing the schools to let them know about that update. A lot of students won't be aware of that, and they'll start doing their fundraising activities. They've never had to do it before, so...
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, concerns by the council?
As far as the mobile food part of it, I think this is really a solid, you know, ordinance. I think we really did a nice job on this. And as somebody who's, who's been a part of that industry, I think it's, it's really competitive, you know, compared to other towns, and I think it's, I think it's great. I'd like to be the first to make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Councilman Gordon with a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. J3, ordinance repelling and replacing ordinance number 666, adopted on January 3rd, 2017, entitled burning permit. Chief Myers, this is you, sir.
I'm here, council. It was brought to committee as far as the change of code, Chapter 119, the open burning. Revised it so that the fees and the permits are eliminated from the city's, transfers the permit over to the fire district to actually issue permits for open burning. Was reviewed by city attorney and again reviewed by council at Committee of the Whole, the last.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns on that before we move on? None at this time. I have a motion to approve by Councilman Collison and a second by Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. J4, ordinance amending the code for the City of Izani, Chapter 8, City Council, Article 3, Section 8 through 21, Order of Business and 826, 8-26, public comment and council meetings end at public hearings. Ms. Wood?
Good evening, Mayor Council. This was presented to Committee of the Whole by advice of our city attorney, that he recommend that we put, rename citizen input to public comment and place it within the call of order of our business of our city council meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Obviously, there's no discussion on that one either. I have a motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Burgley and Collison at the same time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. J5, ordinance repelling, Chapter 68 of the Izani City Code, of ordinances repelling to adult uses and adapting a new Chapter 68. Ms. Selman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Per the city attorney, it has been determined that the current regulations regarding adult uses needs to be updated. The attached ordinance was drafted by the League of Minnesota Cities' appointed attorney. We did discuss it at the Committee of the Whole. Staff is recommending approval. Basically, this repeals the current ordinance and replaces it with the proposed language. In addition, there'll be some zoning ordinance amendments that take place as far as zoning districts and where this is a permitted use. That will be coming forth to the planning commission. All zoning ordinances need to have a public hearing at the planning commission before they can review it at city council.
Make a motion to approve.
So, I guess I have a question on this. This is going to the planning commission, too?
Mr. Mayor, no. This ordinance only goes before city council, but based on some of the changes in this ordinance, there needs to be changes to the zoning ordinance. For example, adult use just by itself is recommended to be approved only in the industrial district, and that needs to be addressed in the zoning code, because zoning code says where items can, or where uses can go.
Isn't it been that way for Eons?
Is it permitted to use there? It's also been listed as an accessory use in different districts. We're taking that out, because this definition now allows that retail sales.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Lundin. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Proposed ordinance and policy discussion only for the city code, Chapter 276, amendment and a draft special assessment policy. Did you have that one, Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Because I forgot to mark it. That's why I'm so confused.
That's right, Mr. Mayor. So, Mayor and council, before we get into talking about this draft, Mr. Laurisong is going to do that. The reason why that this is brought before council in its draft form is because we did not bring it to Committee of the Whole. What I'd like for advisory from the council is whether or not we need to send these drafts to Committee of the Whole. By direction and advisement of our city attorney, he said that that is unnecessarily, unnecessary, and it can prolong the passing of ordinances, potentially. He said most cities do have staff post for the 10 days, which is required by state statute, to give notice to the public. However, it can come right before council. So, staff is looking for direction on that.
Is there a way to do it where individually, I mean, do we have to decide on each one, or? I just ask that because sometimes I think we have good discussion in Committee of the Whole. That's why I say that. I mean, I suppose we have good discussion here, too, but... That's my thought on the matter.
Well, currently, we do have a policy that says it does need to be reviewed at committee, so it would be retracting, repealing that policy. If council would like to keep it the same?
The attorney said it wasn't necessary, though, correct?
Correct. He said it's an unnecessary, excuse me, he said it's an unnecessary step that can prolong.
I get that. I just, I think there are some good discussion in Committee of the Whole that we don't necessarily have by the time we get to council.
Yes, my thought is that it may only prolong it for a half hour, hour, two hours until the council meeting following the call. Can we discuss it at call and then add it to the agenda that even, same evening for council to just make a decision?
No, we don't, council member, we don't do that, because at call, it gets reviewed, and then we are required by state statute to post for 10 days, so it automatically has to wait. And if we meet at call once per month, it can delay it by a month, but we don't post it for the 10 days until it's been reviewed. But that's not required. That's just the way we have done it.
I think this would cut time out.
I think it would.
This would be shorter for staff. This should be shorter for us. This would be, I mean, we're, we're taking an unnecessary step.
Well, yeah, I guess if we decide that evening that we'd like to discuss, discuss it further, we can table it.
But, well...
Depending on what it is.
Right. And, and there's going to be another discussion that we're going to have later on here when Mr. Sylvester chats, because I found something else that we're doing wrong as well. I mean, it was kind of this way, a- as far as citizen input goes, as far as this goes, as far as what our next subject's going to be, it's, God bless our new attorney. That's all I'll say, and you'll understand why when we get to it, because, I mean, he's, he's cutting time out for staff, cutting time out for us, and...
I get that.
You gentlemen know me, if we, we're going to discuss it, we're going to discuss it. I'm not going to tape your mouth and tie your hands.
To your point, council member, Collison, yes, you're right. If we have, we can have the great discussions that we've had at call at council, and if there is further need to review, revise, look into things further, it would be postponed to the, potentially, the next city council meeting, or whichever meeting down the road that we wanted. Always an option.
Yep. Yes. I make a motion to approve.
Also, what you're, what you're saying is you would post it previous to the council meeting?
In the draft form.
Okay, so it would already have been posted, so we could actually make decisions at council as we discuss.
You could take action if you wanted to.
Unless we postpone it. Then if we postpone it, then we can push it back to call.
So then we can have some of those same discussions in, in council meetings instead of at Committee of the Whole, where...
And then going back to a council meeting and have another discussion on it.
If we want to.
Yeah. But, on most steps, we're cutting time out for staff and...
Sure, yeah, right, right.
You know, little, little money saver, time saver.
Right. Yeah, I'd second that.
Alright, I have a motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mayor. That was for direction to staff, and now I'm going to ask Mr. Laurisong to touch on this assessment policy and also the draft ordinance.
Mayor and council, before we get tonight, for discussion is an amendment to city code, Chapter 276, special assessments. The original base code, just so you're aware, was developed in 1991, and has only been amended once over the years. The updates regard aligning the policy to include funding options, which is both internal and external project funding, matching policy to current practice, and updates is recommended by the city engineer, our finance director, and the League of Minnesota Cities. As a part of this update, the city code chapter itself would be amended to include what is needed by ordinance, and you don't think that is needed, is deferral of assessments, and then the rest of it would move into a resolution as a special assessment policy that could be reviewed from time to time. Again, the city attorney has reviewed the updated city code and policy, and is, and is recommending consideration of it.
So, at this time, this would be discussion, if there's anything that you'd like staff to look into further. If the consensus of the council is to move forward with this, we would post for the 10 days and then bring this back to council and file draft form.
I think we should get everything updated as much as we can, and I motion we move forward with it.
So, what was the other option, not bring it back to council and...
To prolong it and bring it back to call is what my understanding was?
So, if there, Mayor and council, if there is any suggested changes that you would like to see, staff would receive those right now, otherwise, it would be to post the draft and move along with the process like we normally do.
To me, it looks like, I mean, looking at what you have here, you've already done your due diligence. I don't know what more we can ask you to do.
I would agree with that.
Unless we want you to put a bow on it and shine it up real nice.
You already made some updates to it, is what you're saying, right?
Oh, yeah.
This is the updates in here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it looks real good.
Yeah, I think it's pretty thorough.
I have a motion by Councilman Lundin to move forward. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to J7, the resolution amending the Izani legacy reconciliation policy. Ms. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor and council. So, this was, discuss it Committee of the Whole, and this was to bring awareness to, to the public, to the citizens, residents, and make sure that they know that all of council would like to recognize either state, national recognition that's been done within the city, or just anything of distinguished nature. So, the public is aware, there is a form, they can reach out to our Park Recreation Culture Manager to fill out this nomination form, and recommendations would come forward to Committee of the Whole, and if Committee of the Whole recommended that they be recognized by council, it would then move on to council, and they'd be awarded a legacy medal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Collison and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to J8, the Sixth Avenue Rehabilitation Preliminary Engineering Report. Mr. Jason Cook.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, as previously directed, we've completed the preliminary engineering report for Sixth Avenue Southwest Rehabilitation to evaluate the feasibility of completing the project. The extents of the project are along Sixth Avenue from South Brookview Lane to just south of Dogwood. That's the segment of road that was completed in between 1990 and 1993. Back in 2014, when we did our pavement analysis, this section was rated as a four out of 10, which warranted a reclamation or something more extreme than just a seal code or a mill and overlay. And now, in the past six years, it's declined even further to more likely a three, where the pavement condition is just unreasonably failed to be able to maintain it. The water main, like I said, was constructed in 1990, along with the sanitary and storm sewer, with two more phases of sanitary sewer extensions with the developments that were in the surrounding area, but the, the underground utilities, that age is, isn't too bad. The condition of them have had no failures or breaks, and they're in the material type that we would recommend at this time. So, the proposed improvements, then, due to the condition of the pavement, is to do a full reclamation, where we blend the bituminous with the Class V underneath it to get a improved base, and then pave a new bituminous surface. A lot of the curb is in good shape, and so we're only recommending doing minor spot patching for the majority of the project, with one full block of curb replacement, because it's in a failed condition, but just, just in the one area. Also, there's the sidewalk that we discussed, that has dead ends on the north and south end of this project, where we would be able to fit a five-foot concrete sidewalk connecting the two ends to complete the loop through the, through the system. And through the review of the water main, the, the northernmost two blocks is only a six-inch main, and we usually have an eight-inch main. And also, in the master comprehensive plan for water main, there was a loop that was supposed to occur just to the east of this, that if we change this pipe to an eight-inch at this time, we don't foresee needing to do that loop for an extended amount of time, whether it's the ultimate development of the area, or, or not at all, actually, at this point. So, so we are recommending replacing the two blocks of six-inch water main to get it to complete the, the network of system, and then, like I said, the, the storm and sanitary are in a condition that's acceptable and no need to, to do any work to. It's just the general overall layout, plenty, plenty of stop sign notes, but essentially, for the retroreflativity requirements, we would replace all signs.
Are you trying to make that a point, Mr. Cook, or?
No, no. This is just... So, current requirements are that you have to have a plan as to how you're going to get all your signs to be that highly reflective look, and our plan that we have in place is essentially, when we have a project, we replace all signs to current standards, and that's generally acceptable to the state, and so, that's why we have to replace them all. This is the same type of scenario of a project as Palomino was, where the road isn't quite wide enough to allow parking on both sides, and as we'll discuss shortly on the funding, we do want to propose using state aid funds, and to do that, we would be required to designate one side a no parking, as we did on, on Palomino. In this case, because the walk would be on the west side, we'd propose to post the no parking on the east side, so that vehicles would be able to park next to the walk and maximize the separation from the pedestrians on the sidewalk and, and the vehicle traffic. As a side item that was brought up when we were bringing this proposal to do this study, it was asked to look into Izani Hills Park access. So, we looked at two alternatives. Alternative one is, what you see here is the, an actual drive entrance with parking stalls. The issues that we ran into are, the parcel on the south, this, that 800 you can see, does have an access easement on the north side of their property, but the parcel to the north, which is 706, does not, and so, to be able to have this access, we would need to get a permanent easement from that property. Just as a ultimate development alternative, we, we did include extending sewer and water service back to the park, just as a possibility of either bathroom or a drinking fountain or whatever you might want to use, but...
That's not irrigated either at this time, is it?
Correct, no, no, it's not. So, yeah, you could use it for that as well. And then you can see on the, the east side, right off the parking lot, would be to connect to the existing trail that you can just see on the east side of that image, that does connect over to the next street over. As you see, that estimated cost for the parking lot would be at $48,800. That's without figuring out the permanent easement, and then, if the utility extension was decided to do as well, that'd be an additional $13,900. So, the other alternative would be to use the easement that exists and only extend the trail from the east to the west and make the, the full connection. There'd be some sign relocation, or fence relocations, and, and it'd be a pretty tight fit between the existing fence on 800 Sixth Avenue and the property line, but it would technically fit, and that project is estimated to be $25,400, but that would not have services extended, and, or, you know, obviously, direct vehicle access to, to the park, as it currently doesn't have.
How much does that park get used?
Councilmember Lundin, that park, while I don't monitor very often, it's not heavily used. It is one of the ones at the very bottom of the tier that is in need of deciding by council if they want to replace it or use those funds for something else.
Isn't that the one the guy uses for golf range?
No, it's not.
Oh, okay.
Is that the one that they use for a dog park and don't clean up?
Nope. But that's also lower on that totem pole of the list of parks, but this is one that, as we will be presenting information to council, at Committee of the Whole, about options of what was discussed at goal setting by Mr. Becker. This is one of those parks that we would look at not replacing the park equipment, because it is in need of repair right now, this one along with the VFW, and if we choose not to replace the play structure equipment and turn this into more of a green state, a greenscape park, those funds would be used for something such as the amphitheater, the facilities that we were growing at Bluebird Park, as I said, discuss at goal setting.
I just, I'm just curious, you know, for us to put, even, you know, I look at it saying, I prefer the $25,000 venture, you know, B over A for the money-wise. I mean, if this park isn't highly used and...
Might spend any money on it.
I think it's not highly used, it's because it's not up to date. It's one of the older parks. I mean, that development's old, but that development is, that park is surrounded by youth. They choose to go across Whiskey Road, because that park is more up to date.
And it's not just that. I think you're, you're looking at a lot of aging people that live on, on Sixth Avenue. I mean, I know, I know when that whole area was built, I mean, I used to race motorcycles out here, so, I mean, that tells you how far that goes. The people that are living there built those houses back, way back, way back, in the day when that development was built, and then those people are still living there today, and their kids are grown up and moved on.
No, there's, there is, I live just down the street from there. There is kids everywhere.
That's on Dogwood, that street right there, right?
Yep.
So...
It's Dogwood and Sixth, that four-way stop.
So, I can see my daycare provider's on your street, on Sixth and Dogwood, right in the corner?
Yep.
She doesn't bring the kids there?
No.
And it's not because it's not up to date?
That's, why, why wouldn't she not bring them there, then, if it's not up?
Because you don't. She'd rather bring them to the park you're talking about. It's not because it's up to date, there's just... She kind of feels like it's in the backyards of people's houses, that it was an improper place to put a park, is her words.
That is true. That's a good point, because I used to live like a block from there, and, and we would sometimes go there, but more often, we'd go to Bluebird.
You kind of feel like you're staring at everybody in their backyard.
Yeah, right.
Or they're staring at you.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it's, it's pretty tight in there next to people's backyard.
And I, and I actually think, parks are very expensive to maintain, and to see us put money into something that isn't being used highly, I know, I have, I have some friends that live over there, and they don't, they don't even bring their grandkids there. You know, they just would go to, like, one over where I live, I don't even know what the name of that one is.
That's the one Councilman Collison's talking about?
And then Bluebird Park, I mean, because it's, it's wide open, and it's not like you're...
That's off of South Passage.
Yes.
What is that park?
Rum River Meadows.
Now, one we just bought, the other lot next to...
I got a park board member in the audience, that's what I was asking.
But, I, I just, I hate to see us put money into a park that's aging, to the point where it's going to cost us just as much to build a new park it would be to fix that one.
I can speak to that. That equipment doesn't make or meet the ADA compliance, so it is replacing that equipment. We have extended it beyond its life and have done as many retrofitting, so to say, of things we can do to try to make it last as long as we can. We feel like staff's done a good job. We've replaced equipment. You can't get equipment, parts for that anymore, but we've done a good job of trying to find things by measuring just right to get things that have worked, and I, I feel like we And I, I feel like we have gotten a lot of useful life, but it would be to take that equipment out and put in new equipment would be, if we were going to keep that park going in the form of having a structured play center, that would be my recommendation.
So, let me ask the council this. What if we didn't, facetiously speaking, we didn't touch that park and we did do a green space, do we still want to put that trail through there, would be my question?
Well, my question, Ms. Woods, is, we were talking about giving the VFW, that VFW park, then what was the plan? Did we have a plan for this park?
We haven't discussed it yet.
We haven't discussed it.
So, that's what we're doing right now?
No, we're not discussing that right now, but we're just, we're looking at what he's got going on here.
Right, I mean, do, do we put the trail through there and at least let, I mean, I kind of like the fact that people walk around our city. I mean, I, I kind of like the fact that I could take my kids on a walk and put my son in a stroller and I have trails to do so, but I don't want to walk through people's backyards either.
Well, if you look at any park the city has in residential areas, they're, they're all in someone's backyard. That's just the way the development, developments are.
Except for Bluebird.
Except for Bluebird, maybe.
Yeah, but I'm saying in resi, within the residential areas, there's a designated park in these developments and this is that designated park area for that, and that's a huge development.
Well, if we're going to make this a green space, can you not walk through green space? Can you still, could we still mow it? I mean...
Councilmember, yes, you can still, we would still maintain it, we would still mow it, we still have the pavilion out there, we would still have picnic tables out there. And talking to your point, Mayor, we do and we have strive, you know, very well to make sure we have all trails connected. Adding a trail here would make a good part of a connection so people know it's there, they can make loops, which is really important for people to, if they're walking kids around, you know, in a stroller or whatever, just making healthy wellness choices of walking around town. The paths that connect near here of the bituminous trails also are in people's backyards, but it will make a nice connected path that is of great benefit to this residence, I would think.
I think, I think our path system, you know, I think most people in this council know I'm pretty passionate about getting sidewalks completed and these trail systems I think that we should do the, I think personally in this, I think we should turn that thing back into green space. Like you said, just still going to have the pavilion out there, still have picnic tables out there. People still can go in there to enjoy it. Bottom dollar wise, to put all this money into park, park toy or swings, whatever you want to call it, it's a lot of money to be sticking into one park where our maintenance would be very little on that, so I, that's why I would opt to do option B or option two on this, on this one and turn that thing into green space rather than, so it still gives somebody ability to park there and walk the system.
I think the playground equipment costs like fifty grand, if I remember right. Correct me if I'm wrong, James.
None of it's...
It's about fifty grand. So, we'd have to spend fifty thousand dollars alone just to replace the equipment. That just seems downright crazy.
That's the way it goes.
Yeah. If we, if, if we can get people to walk through there just by mowing it, I don't think we need a trail. That's my view.
I don't think we need a trail either.
So, I say neither option, in my opinion.
I'd like to see the driveway through and the parking lot and we can have irrigation in that park and get really beautiful. Again, the people around there that live there deserve a park in their development still.
And, Councilmember, Jason could touch on this, but I mean, if that is something that council wanted to explore, you can run water and sewer lines in there without putting the parking lot and doing a trail, correct?
Correct, yeah. You know, this was just an add-on...
If irrigation was a, a goal.
Mm-hmm. Just, you know, element from what the original study was. So, technically, we'll later get into funding here, you know, this doesn't actually fit into the funding of the rest of the other projects, so these really are just evaluations for you guys to consider and, you know, maybe right now, you're, you're think, you know, would like to go with the ultimate of a drive entrance with parking? Well, it doesn't have to happen now. You know, this is just to get the idea of what cost might be and for budgeting, you know, for that to be a project in the future is, you know, it would be a standalone project almost completely anyway.
But then it's going to cost us more in the future.
Well, just inflation and whatnot and, you know, you would get a little bit...
Well, you're doing, you're doing Sixth Avenue, why wouldn't we do this? Boom, boom.
That's why I recommended looking at it because it's already there.
Right. So, we're, yep, looking into it, but I'm just saying for that cost, the sixty-eight thousand or so, if you were going to do all of it, you know, it's just that, that's more a separate funding source, so it, it wouldn't go through the same program as the rest of the project. It would just be whether or not you get a, a cost savings on, you know...
Equipment being there.
Economy of scale and, you know, really the only thing that would really should happen would be to get the services stubbed out with this project so that we don't have to go back in and cut into the street. If ultimately there was ever the thought to do it, that would really be the only piece that should get added to the Sixth Avenue project, you know, to prepare for it, but by no means does either option have to occur with it, you know, if that wasn't the preference.
Means we're talking to James. Do you, does the Park and Rec Board have any thoughts on that park?
While looking at your option one, where is the, what side of the, the, our Sandy Hills Park, what side is it on? Down the north?
North side.
That'd be right off Sixth Avenue, James, and Dogwood is that intersection right there. So, that would be where that entry would be.
Dogwood's further, further south.
I was very close to him that his place runs right up to that park on the lower side of the town. His kids don't even use that park, I mean, so...
That's why I say don't even bother.
That's a Park and Rec member, everybody.
Right, but if, if it had playground equipment, like Sandy Meadows has?
I think, I think, yes.
People would use it more.
And their, their age range is, is four and six, so...
I say just leave it.
They typically, just mow it, Rum River Meadows, so I don't know.
Mayor, if I may, for the record, this is Mr. James Witty on the Park, Rec and Culture Board.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't say that.
I should, I messed up.
No, that's okay. I should have been the one to say it. It's James Witty talking in the audience instead of stepping up to the podium. Jason could have just brought the mic to you too.
Mr. Cook is already there, hard to...
I got an MC.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, as for intense purposes right now, I think we should get a service stubbed in on this project so that we don't have to tear into the street and then we can always make that determination later, but as, as we want to move forward with this project, I think, you know, like Mr. Cook is saying, now's the time to at least get the service in.
I would agree with that.
And that server, that stub could just sit there. It doesn't have to do anything at this moment.
Which won't cost us too much in the future.
Correct, yep. So, like we say, this was the add-on evaluation, just to give you guys something to get a idea of how things fit and costs and we can certainly stub out a, a water service to prepare for it, for any kind of possibility, so. So, with that said then, that actually leads me to the cost assessment for the Sixth Avenue project. These numbers do not include either of those two options on the idea that those would be considered a separate project anyway, so...
The only question is what would that service stub in cost?
Probably about fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, so I mean, at this point, that's immaterial. It costs us more than fifteen hundred dollars, but that service stub in later, so...
Right, because of the street patching cost would be more than that in itself in addition to it. And we actually already will be doing, if, if you do elect to do the, the water main improvement with this, we'd already have one service that'd have to get redone just because it falls in that run, so we'd already have a contractor that has those capabilities, so it wouldn't be a whole separate type of work that wouldn't already have been included. So, with that said, the street improvements are at about three hundred thousand, that's the reclaiming and the curb repairs. The water main was that first two blocks going to an eight-inch with, there is only one service that falls on that run. The sidewalk is, you know, all that work, including driveways and grading, that would go with adding that sidewalk along the west side of the entire run to give a total project cost of five hundred seventy-seven thousand four hundred approximately. So, of that, this is a, a state aid route and so the sidewalk and the street costs are state aid eligible, so we'd be able to use state aid funds to cover that. This is also to follow the same system that we used with Palomino. The, the reclaiming of the street is assessable at twenty-five percent of the street improvement costs, so just of those street elements, not the water or the sidewalk. So, the way that breaks out for the assessment policy is by the front footage and that averages out to an assessment of the properties along that abut the project to be about twenty-seven hundred dollars per property. And obviously, that number would be discussed at a public hearing and then that would kind of get established as kind of the cap of how the assessment process goes. And then depending on how actual bids come in and the actual cost of the project comes in, it, you know, could go down for the resident, but this is the estimated, you know, kind of cap once that all goes through on the process. Currently, the, the city policy is a sidewalk, a new sidewalk that wasn't petitioned for is not assessable and so this run along the west side would not be assessable, but it is state aid eligible, so we'd be able to cover that cost with state aid funds. And the water main, because it's getting upsized to meet a system-wide network improvement, it doesn't really fit under the assessment policy on replacing failed condition pipe, so that wouldn't really get assessed. Essentially, the water could go through the water fund and the remaining of the, the costs to the city would be able to be used under state aid funds, so the way it all lays out, it doesn't look like any general fund would need to be used to, to complete the project.
I, I, that's a good idea. I just hate seeing people get assessed for it, but that's nature of the beast. I mean, it's, I, you know, it's always that, why do I got to pay for it thing again, you know? But if they got a good street in front of their house, that makes it, were their house worth that much more too.
Right, and I guess just in comparison, Palomino was a, a larger project, had essentially less residents on it, so the, the actual dollar amount on this project per resident is averaging out less than, than the Palomino one, just as a comparison, but it's the same topic, you know, for fairness and consistency, you know, to continue to do it, you know, would be showing those that have already paid that it is being applied to everyone equally.
Well, I know Councilman Collison drives on it, I'm sure he knows that road sucks.
I drive on it to bring my kids to daycare and then I, I drive out of town on that road all the way to...
Yep. It's pretty tough. Last summer was...
South Passage and it's, it's a bad road.
Yeah. Needs to be, needs to be done.
I think I need new shocks because of that road.
You can't charge the city for that, sorry. I mean, you know, we're finally putting back in place, you know, the maintenance of these roads, so this wouldn't have never happened, wouldn't be in the shape it is if we would have been implementing that street maintenance program a long time ago, so...
Yeah, I guess, you know, because essentially this was last paved in ninety or ninety-three, you know, it's three different years worth of construction. The fact that, that life, you know, is at twenty-seven years or so, you know, that's the minimum life expectancy we usually think we're going to get out of a street. It does look like the existing section out there was extremely thin, that they only put two inches of bituminous on five inches of class five. We're recommending going to three and a half inches of bituminous on this thickened reclaimed material, so we should have a much better section moving forward, more consistent with the city standard here, but, so that, that pavement section being very thin and no, you know, real maintenance being completed on it, the fact that it got to that kind of minimum life expectancy isn't surprising.
Yep.
But now with a thicker section and a maintenance program, you know, we'll obviously hope to extend that life between the next reclaim project.
But actually, when that street was done, there was far less houses there because of that other, you know, that other extension operated up South Passage, all those lots have been filling in, that means that's that much more traffic, so I mean, it's, it, I guess we got our life out of it, so I make a motion to move forward with this, with the exception of putting in that service for that park.
What do we, so as far as the city's actual cost, I mean, almost everything is state aid or assessed, other than about sixty-seven thousand from the water fund for...
Correct.
Okay. So, that's a pretty good deal.
And...
And we budgeted, we budgeted for that, that's in the current budget already too. I mean, we planned for this project, right?
Correct, yep. And, and so that's part of why we know that the state aid funds that are available, well, we'll have to do an advance request, which is kind of a standard procedure to get those funds. You know, that's what we were planning on and, and the fact that zero dollars coming out of the general fund, you know, was the game plan in the capital improvement plan and this is just holding to what was laid out in the capital improvement plan back when that got laid out. So, I guess the last piece I want to touch on is with the assessment process, we have very specific resolutions that have to get passed and public hearings that have to happen with certain timelines. So, the first official thing would be passing two different resolutions today, calling for a public hearing and authorizing the development of the plans and specifications, which then that public hearing would get scheduled for what we're laying out for March fourth. It'd be just an option to do an open house before that and to get all those people impacted by it, a chance to see the layouts.
That's a Wednesday, right?
Impacts, what's that?
That's a Wednesday, right?
Yep, that's a Wednesday. That's the day after Committee of the Whole council meeting.
I think that's a good idea, actually. I mean, what I was going to just direct Ms. Wood to do is, you know how I am, let's send every resident a letter, let them know what we're doing.
Yeah, it's best to let them know.
So, I think it would be in our best interest to be as transparent as possible on this project, as long, and I'll, I'll sound like a broken record because I say it all the time, on anything the city does, whether it's sending out letters, whether it's having an open house, whether, whatever we do, to best keep our residents in the loop of, of what we're going to do or possibly going to do or planning to do, the more the merrier. So, I would say yes to that open house and I, I will attend it with you, Mr. Cook.
I would agree with yes, but I think Wednesday's a terrible day. I mean, even schools, well...
I won't be able to make it that Wednesday because I have fire district meetings, so...
It's a regular scheduled council meeting? March fourth is a regular scheduled council meeting due to the primaries?
We're, we're talking the open house February nineteenth is the...
Oh, I thought you were talking March fourth?
No, no, no. February nineteenth, the open house, that is a fire district meeting.
I'm just questioning the date.
There's a question mark on there. I mean, it's open, because that's not a required step.
So, we can just, we can, okay, we can pick our date.
I'd recommend, you know, we give maybe a week's notice, so, you know, if we pick a day, you know, I can get a mailing list of everybody on it within a block maybe of it and get that out.
I'd like to see more than a week's notice for some of the residents.
I would too.
So, the public hearing is required ten days with two times in the paper and, and all sorts of the required steps. This is the, you know, just getting the word out there, what's going on and you can give as much notice as you want.
One other question I forgot to ask you, the two, so the cost for the engineering is fifty-nine thousand and fifty-four thousand for the two parts of it, right?
Yep.
But the state doesn't cover that cost, right?
No, it does.
It does. That's part of that five...
Yeah, because actually the state will cover up to twenty-five percent in engineering administration. This number is significantly less than that even.
Okay, alright.
So, March fourth, that is not...
That is a council meeting.
Is it? Okay. So, why, why couldn't we push that open house to February twenty-sixth?
Because it's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
I don't think we should have it a Wednesday open house, in my, I'm giving my opinion here.
Why?
Because now even, even schools let kids out early for church, they, it's Wednesday night's a church night. I'm just saying, Wednesday night tends to be let, left alone by...
Why would kids need to be let out of school early for that? Or why would...
He's saying it's a church night for Wednesday night.
I mean, so, so on that, though, February twenty-fifth, that Tuesday, doesn't have a committee meeting, it's just a council meeting, we could do it before the council meeting on the twenty-fifth.
I would like that one.
The Park, Rec and Culture Board meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Ew.
Well, we can get more people at the Park and Rec meeting now.
Yeah, that's at six o'clock, we could have this at seven.
James is smart.
I have not seen the Park, Rec and Culture agenda. I'm not sure if it will be done in an hour, but we could make it be.
Almost always is, I don't think, I haven't been to one that's been longer than an hour here. No, not really.
I think we should plan it for February twenty-fifth at seven PM.
Immediate following Park and Rec meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
If Jason's available, we can make that work. I just have a question for mayor and council. So typically, open houses is held by staff, but I'm hearing maybe that some people want to come. If more than three of you are gonna come, we'll need to post as a public meeting, and we need to formally post the agenda three days prior. There's some other things that we do, so could I get a consensus? Are you looking, mayor and council also looking to attend that meeting?
You gentlemen want to attend that meeting?
I won't be able to make that, so don't worry about me.
Councilman Lundin?
I don't care either way.
Councilman Gordon?
I have a fire meeting that night probably too, I think.
Councilman Burgley?
I will, I will check into it. How soon do you need to know? Right away?
I would need to know by, by the twentieth. I would need to post it that day, so maybe even the day before, the nineteenth.
I will tell you, I will be there.
You're so cooperative.
I mean, it's not necessarily that we're here. It's more Jason answering their questions.
They have to post.
I, 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 I know, that's what I'm getting at. I don't necessarily need to be here. I mean, staff can discuss that with them. Jason is there. He's gonna know more of the figures and stuff, stuff than I will, so I, I mean, I don't need to be there, so I don't see where it's a big deal, so. No, I'll just say no, I won't attend it.
So there could be two of us at most.
We do not need to post for that, so that's okay.
There, solve the problem. That's what I was getting at, Mr. Collison.
So there'd be two of us that would tend with you at anything. I mean, you're the important one. You need to be there, not us, but.
Yep.
Yeah, and I.
But I'm gonna be there for morals.
Actually, for.
I'll be there for moral support for you, Mr. Cook.
Um, we, I was actually, I'd like to make a pitch just to the public that getting more people to come, you know, is the better.
Absolutely.
I think we only had about three or maybe five people come to the Palomino Road one.
And that's why I said, we'll send out letters saying we're gonna have this open house.
We had more than that come to the public hearing, right? I mean, it seems like the place is packed up for public hearing.
It was just that preliminary, let everybody know what's going on.
So with that being said, I make a motion to move forward with your recommendations on both parts. I can't remember what you discussed, but whatever.
So what, earlier you said without the parks.
With the stub out.
It's just, so the service is at the edge of the road.
So the service is stubbed in while they redo the street.
Can we split the question on that, or does that not allow?
What?
What do you mean, split the question?
Well, vote on whether we want to put a stub out in or vote on the other part of it.
I, I, my recommendation is to do the stub for now, and we can deal with the park issue later. But stub is what's important. If we wait with the stub after the street's done.
It's gonna cost us more money.
Six thousand dollars.
Well, I'm saying not even deal with it. I'm saying.
You don't want to do it at all, is what you're saying.
But I want to do the road, so.
You want to do Sixth Avenue, but you don't want to do anything with the, the park at all.
But I think even if, that's what you want to do, but my point is, it's fifteen hundred dollars to put the stub in. If it never gets used, it's there. It never gets used. It's fifteen hundred dollars well spent, then all of a sudden, somebody says, I want that done, now it's five thousand dollars later to put the stub in. I just think that fifteen hundred dollars is well spent now.
Well, what I'm saying with that fifteen hundred dollars, then it's tempting to go ahead and, and do it. I don't think we should even.
But that's a whole nother discussion.
That's another discussion. And, and I agree with you, Mr. Burgley. I agree. I personally wouldn't want to see any money put into it, but that's not, that's me. But it's all of us in the council that make that decision.
Well, that's what we vote.
Yeah, that's what I. But I, but I still think that we should at least put the stub in right now.
I mean, even if we made it a green space in the future, it'd be potentially, it could still have, you know, a need.
Irrigated. Then that's the only reason I'm saying that.
The stub's not a bad thing, I don't think.
I see what you're saying though, too.
I do, I do see what Councilman Burgley's saying.
No, exactly what he's saying.
And I think Councilman Lundin gets it.
Yeah, I totally get it. I totally agree with you, but I just think it's fifteen hundred dollars, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of flesh later.
I'd rather spend the fifteen hundred than forty-five hundred more dollars down the line.
Probably be just that for the asphalt covering the patch you're digging up in the road.
So that's why I said that.
It'd be forty-five hundred just for the asphalt.
And then we got a patch on the road that we just redid. So that was my motion.
I do have a motion from Councilman Lundin to move forward with this project minus the pathway and/or parking lot.
With the stub being put in now.
But a stub put in. Do I have a second or another motion?
I'll second, yeah, I'll second that. I just have one question that doesn't.
And I have a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. You have your direction, Mr. Cook. Go ahead with your question, Councilman Collison.
I just want to touch base with our public works director. Sometimes I, like, with previous experience, sometimes, not necessarily with public, but you guys are left out on loop when it comes to design of a road for as far as maintenance concerns go. Did you, have you looked at the plan? You don't see any nightmare as far as maintenance goes?
You had it right. Any nightmares that you might want to say?
This is a pretty basic, straight shot road, you know?
I'm looking forward to something being done with that road. It's, it's in tough shape.
It's probably chewing up our plow blades, huh?
Well, the plow blades are chewing up the road.
Or that.
I guess we do have, I believe we gotta do one separate motion for the calling for the public hearing also.
I, I kind of put that all in there. That's what I, that's what my nominee, my motion was.
And the open house.
Yeah, all of it.
Do all of it. Your open house, do all of it. We'll just have to agree on those dates. But you got a good plan. Kudos to you, sir.
Good job.
This is like the best one yet, Mr. Cook. I mean, you're getting better and better as we go here. I love it. I love it.
Yeah, who was the guy before you?
Brad the Wolf.
Yeah.
Yeah, where's Brad? I was gonna ask.
Who's that guy? Don't you remember now? We designated Mr. Cook as the guy. There is no more Brad anymore.
Brad's, Brad's the big wheel in the clog.
Oh, no, we only know Jason Cook.
He was the wolf, now we got the bear.
That's the team player, the family man of Iceni, Jason Cook.
Just give him the key, just give him the keys to the city.
Jason's putting his boots on him.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to item J nine. It's a resolution authorizing purchase of twenty nineteen all-wheel drive Dodge Durango and associated equipment. Chief Myers?
Hey, mayor and council, this is identified in the capital improvement plan as far as our fleet management plan, so it's up for purchase of another fully marked squad vehicle. It was a budgeted allocated for forty-six thousand three hundred fifty. The difference between that and the fifty-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-six is because we added the C S O, which changed our fleet management plan, because we needed, we retained a vehicle we were gonna replace, so he's gonna be driving that older vehicle. And then you have the radar watch guard system, the radio that would've been put into it, the new vehicle, as far as reclaimed, but since retaining his, that other vehicle for the C S O, we're not gonna take that equipment out. Those items are on a ten-year lifecycle.
And this was a budgeted item?
It is minus.
Minus those other three items that we were gonna take out of the old vehicle.
How, how, how old is that radio? And is it two-two-four? Is that what squad numbered it? Two-twenty-one?
So that would be on its six, five, six years, so.
So it's halfway there.
Halfway there, so once our next year, next squad replacement, we'll then take those items to replace, so we're shifting that back one year.
We still got life in that equipment, fellows.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Gordon and a second by Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five-zero.
Does that got a hemi in it?
Yes.
So does our other two.
It's got a hemi.
Oh.
Oh.
Okay, I'm a little slow today, apparently.
Yeah.
J ten, resolution approving boiler replacement at public workshop, Mr. Matt Sylvester. And before Matt goes into this, gentlemen, we, we tabled this item. This is the discussion that I was gonna have, Councilman Collison. We were advised by our attorneys that we don't want to table. Ms. Wood, you're gonna have to fill me in here on the blanks. We didn't want, you know what, you just say it.
When council wants to take action to table an item, it is to table it for later in the meeting, and it must still be discussed at that meeting. If council desires to talk about an item at a future meeting, whether it's to collect more information, have staff look into something, it would actually be a postponement, postponement, so council would make an action, make a motion to postpone the meeting to, and make the date of the following council meeting, and then you would take a second on that.
So we were on the right page of what we wanted to do, just the wrong verbiage.
Yep.
So if we table something, we have to talk about it again that night, but if we postpone to a later date, that makes more sense. Then we don't get any legal loopholes. With that being said, Mr. Sylvester?
Mayor Johnson, a member of city council. In December two thousand nineteen, the boilers went down at the public workshop. We called in T M Johnson Brothers to make repairs. Johnson Brothers informed us that the boilers were not repairable, that they need to be replaced. The boilers are on our twenty-year capital improvement plan as infler heat boilers in Fund Nine Twenty in the Streets Department. The boilers had been scheduled for replacement in two thousand twenty-two, an estimated cost of twenty-six thousand two hundred twenty-five. Unfortunately, they need to be replaced now, as we're only running on the makeup air unit. To accept the recommended quote, council would authorize for resolution to acceptance of the quote, and also authorize the finance director to amend the two thousand twenty budget to allow for the expenditure. Future twenty-year capital improvement plan will then reflect that change, an estimated twenty-five-year use of life would remain unchanged. Future replacement boilers will be planned for year two thousand forty-five. So I went out and got five quotes, and I'm recommending Dean's Heating for their expertise and willingness to solve the issues we have at the shop. And I'm gonna give you a little background on how I came up with that, was when I asked Johnson Brothers to come out and give me a quote, I expressed the fact that the boilers in the shop run nonstop. I start them in the fall, they run all the way to long twenty-four seven. They shut off in the spring when it's warm enough for the shop for them to shut off. I expressed that to him, and I said, you know, it's not just replacing the boilers, there's gotta be something wrong with them. So he gave me a quote. I called out Dean's Heating for a second quote and expressed my same concerns again with Dean's Heating about the boilers running nonstop. He called me back three days later and was concerned with why they run nonstop and wanted to send an expert out to look at the boilers, who is their expert. The same afternoon, I met with him, and he said that as he came in, we looked at things over. He said he would not recommend the cast iron boilers we have at the shop, and he recommends stainless steel boilers. He expressed the fact that the pumps we need to run, that we need, we need to pump thirty gallons a minute versus the eight gallons a minute pumps that we have now. Basically, they're undersized. He'd recommend a completely different design to my system and start completely over, take out everything I got and start all over. My shop started out with geothermal, and geothermal didn't work. They pulled the geothermal out, put in the boilers. Now with the boilers, the boilers have the same effect. They're not, they were just kind of put together, and they don't work for what I need them to do. So every vendor that I called out to look at this system, I expressed the same thing that Dean's Heating said. Listen, here's what he said. Everything he told me made sense. It's, I'm not moving enough water through the shop, which is why it's not sending hot water out far enough to heat the floor. It all made sense what he told me, and that's why I come up with Dean's Heating as my chosen vendor.
Any questions, comments, concerns by the council?
I like the fact that we'd be using somebody local to do this. My only concern is I had somebody had called Dean's that they installed a heating system for, and the guy's system went down Saturday, and he called for them to come and fix it, and he never got a call back. That'd be my only concern, that when this thing's down, they need to come service it now, not at their leisure.
I think that in a warranty situation, we would have them come out, basically under warranty, in a situation where we didn't have to have Dean's Heating come out. Some mechanical is our chosen, our contracted vendor. They come out on short notice and do different things for us at, at the time, so we can always call them, and they do heating and plumbing at the same time, so we can always go there. Or we could call any one of the vendors that I got a, a quote from at that.
No, I just, just like I said, I don't care. They install it, I don't care if it's under warranty or not. They installed it, they should service it. And when it's a no heat call, it should be serviced immediately. That's my only concern.
Or do we have to tell them we have children in there, and then they'll react?
So.
I think we can run, we, we could run into that problem with any vendor that installs it.
We could. What kind of warranty did we get?
I believe it's a one-year warranty on the labor and two years on the boilers.
That's pretty reasonable. A lot, a lot of them don't even go that far.
Usually boilers are ten-year warranties on parts and labor. I'd ask them about the boiler warranty. It's, it's a lot of times, it's just registering it to get that, get that tenure. Normally on, on the heating equipment, it's a five-year minimum warranty on the equipment.
And I, and I could have that wrong, because like I said, I had Nova Dusen vendors come and take, like, might have that backwards on a couple of them. I don't have that in front of me right now, but that's what I'm remembering.
Well, my motion is to follow Mr. Sylvester's recommendation, move forward.
At the last meeting, you guys said you had another, maybe a better option or something like that? Was that just getting these different bids and stuff, or? Didn't you say you had maybe some other options he was looking into or something at the last?
We did, and it fell apart, let's put it that way. Let's just leave it at that.
I think it also should be known too, he's got twenty-six thousand dollars in the, in the budget for replacement, he's in two thousand forty or would win this year. It's, you know, it's more this year because it's a redesign. I think what he has in the budget is a good number if we're just replacing the boilers. But right now, we need to completely redesign it, which is why it's more money.
True, if we redesign, if we redesign the system now, and it could potentially last us twenty to twenty-five years, and then if we have to do anything further in the future, all we're doing is replacing those boilers, and that's the only cost the city has, because everything else is up to par. So I, I, I like it.
I just was curious if what other option you guys were talking about, but if this is the best one, I'll second it.
I have a motion to move forward with Mr. Sylvester's recommendation by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Motion carries five-zero. Get some new heat in that public works building, sir. Approving the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve that consent agenda by Councilman Burgley and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Motion carries five-zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Burgley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Lundin and Collison at the same time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Motion carries five-zero, therefore we stand adjourned.